...of Monday, August 7th, 2017. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First up is order of business. Mr. Kessel, is there any changes to the order of business?
President Decker, I'd like to add a potential land sale to the order of business. Under for administration.
Are you going to put that under your reports then?
Yes, please.
Okay. Potential land sale in administration. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Kessel on the order of business? Are you going to look for a motion to approve the order of business?
Second.
You have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order of business is approved. Next up is consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss or have questions for staff?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
You have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have three timetable issues tonight, 5:05 and 5:10, but we'll move along to non-timetable. First thing up is proclamation, the extra mile day. City of Dickinson, North Dakota proclamation, celebrate extra mile day, 2017. Whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which chooses to shine a light on celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota acknowledges the mission of extra mile America to create 575 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support extra mile day on November 1st, 2017. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of the City Commission of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2017 to be extra mile day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organization's families, community, country, or world a better place. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed. And I would look for a motion to-
A move.
We have a motion to approve extra mile day.
Second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sign the extra mile day proclamation. Okay, moving on, we're going to a forfeiture account. Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. What I am proposing and would like you to consider is that we have a separate checking account for the asset forfeiture account. This asset forfeiture account is seizure money that the PD handles, and right now it is in the general fund checking account. And being that it's not really citizens' money for that supports our revenue and stuff, we would like to be able to put it into a separate checking account, but under the custody of the police department with two signatures required, and then the financial portion of it would still be handled in the finance department of it. I'd be glad to answer any questions or anything that you may have for this.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson?
I'd move to approve of the request.
Second.
I do have one question. What type of amount are we looking at?
Twenty-one thousand, just a little over-
That's what's currently?
Yes, currently, and there's twenty-one thousand.
Do we have a motion to approve? And second. Any other further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the HR manual. Attorney Kreip?
Good evening, Commissioners. We've got the second reading of the HR manual, and as Mr. Kessel and I were discussing, I don't think you have a draft of it in your-
We do not.
-your packet, so I think what might be appropriate at this point is to maybe move on, and I will figure out why there's not a draft and email to you so you can see the changes. I can explain them, but I think it's better if you can actually view it before you're voting, so if that's okay with you, I'd just ask to move on to the next item and I'll get that circulated via email for you.
Would it be wise maybe to move it? Because, I mean, it's a lot of documents to review.
If you prefer, we can. It won't have changed that substantively from the last reading to this reading, so you shouldn't have to review everything, but if you'd like to because of the change we did make, that might be advisable, so.
I would be more comfortable if we maybe brought this up at our next meeting. Give us time to review it.
Sure.
I agree.
So, do we need to, do you need a vote to table this then?
No, I don't think so. There's no vote to do anything that just fits. Just move on.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to reports. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Decker. You have before you some thank you notes that we've received from senior citizen centers, Badlands Ministries, and Energy Transfer Partners. These are all, well, except for the Energy Transfer Partners, these are grant funds that they've received through our grant programs that we've administered. Energy Transfer Partners was a letter of support because of DAPL and our involvement, especially the police department involvement in assisting with our DAPL presence. The next item is a letter of support, and this one is for what's called SANE. It's a human trafficking and victims treatment grant. It's actually through the state of North Dakota. We were approached by Domestic Violence and Rape Abuse Crisis Center. They have, they're required by state law to have a local political subdivision administer the grant on their behalf. So the state wants to give the dollars to a local political subdivision. The Bismarck, the city of Bismarck has been that group in the past and has decided not to be the pass-through this year. And so they approached us to find out if we would. We've been a big supporter of rape and abuse in the past, and so they thought that we would also support their efforts to make sure that this program continues. So what you have before you then is the letter of support and the application to allow the city of Dickinson to be that local political subdivision that would be, receive the funds from the state and then distribute it from there. What this program does is hires forensic nurse examiners so that they're on staff in case there is a rape or a reported rape, so that these staff members can respond and do, administer an examination in a rape kick throughout wherever they provide those services in North Dakota. The funding would come through the city of Dickinson, and then we would be the pass-through to those grant recipients. So I hope I explained that well enough. It's a noble cause, and they were in jeopardy of not being able to administer those funds if we didn't step in. So I'll try to answer any questions that you have, but the recommendation is to support being the grant administrator of this program.
Any questions for Mr. Kessel? I think this is something that we need to step up and help with.
I'd move we approve the letter of support.
We have a motion to approve the letter of support in a second. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Kessel? Not will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Would you like me to go over the additional item, or should we go in the order that is next, which would be a report from Museum Director Bob Frum?
Why don't we just stay with the order?
Okay. Then I'll-
Here today, just to give you kind of an update on where things are going at the museum, since I've finished about seven months here, I figured it was time to tell you if I'm doing anything worthwhile or not. I want to start out with just taking a shot at some of the numbers. This is visitation through the end of July. You'll see that we have served just under eight thousand total people. Majority are paid, except for our comps down below, the 450, most of those are our under two visitors. A lot of families come, so we see a lot of little ones. And then our toddler Tuesday program, which is also a free program, they're counted into our admissions as well. Admissions, to date, this represents $33,668, so we're doing pretty well on our income. Comparing to 2016 is a little bit difficult because the record-keeping, as far as the admissions and things were concerned, last year didn't really come up the snuff until about mid-year, but I can compare June and July directly from '16 to '17. In 2016, June, our admissions were 5,706 as opposed to 9,514 in 2017. July of last year, 4735 as opposed to 13,687. So we are having a really good year along those lines, and I think we are going to hit our projections for admissions probably 9,000 plus and revenue close to about 80,000. So things are going pretty well along those lines. Just want to touch base. We have had a couple of special events through '17. Our murder mystery evening, if you might remember that back in January, 64 guests helped us raise over $4,000 for our exhibit program. Then in April, we had our Easter egg hunt. Approximately 150 kids and their parents enjoyed hunting for Easter eggs and other activities. I learned that my knees just aren't up to running a beanbag toss, but we had a good time regardless. So one of the other things, just want to bring to your attention are some progresses, progress that's been made with our physical plant. The new LED lighting is installed in all the galleries. If you haven't been there this year, if you remember from maybe a past visit in '15 or '16, I'd encourage you to come. There's a world of difference with the new lighting. Relatively inexpensive thing that makes the place look exceptionally terrific, especially the dinosaur side with the mineral exhibit. Just looks like it was something brand-new just brought in. Very happy to report that on the Oka Museum side, our history museum side, the timeline exhibit has been completed. Getting a lot of really good feedback on that. Certainly, our work of our curator in history, Allison Hinman, should be acknowledged. She's also responsible for the display in the city hall lobby this month. Did a terrific job with that, and just want to mention that staff has been just a real joy to work with since getting here. Some other things that have been going on with the exhibit program are augmented reality sandbox. If you haven't had a chance to come by and play with that, I suggest you do. Give yourself an extra 10 or 15 minutes. You'll spend more time there than the kids do. The CVB put a lot of effort into social media exposure for that, and actually, as far as their shares and things were concerned off of their social media Facebook account, it's the highest activity they've ever seen on any one of their posts. So real proud of that. Dr. Fowler, our paleontologist, has been, is in the field right now doing some excavation work, but just before he left, he was able to start to bring together our ontogeny exhibit from eggs to baby dinosaurs. You'll see a couple of views of that there. Also in the exhibit program on the paleo site coming up in fall is our claws exhibit. Here's a, shows artist conception of what one of the new models is going to look like as well as some casting for that. This is something we're really excited about. These are dinosaur models that are really reflecting a lot of new scholarship, so you'll actually see feathered dinosaurs, which is kind of, kind of new over the last 15 or 20 years. Be something a little bit different for our exhibition hall. I just want to mention Pioneer Machinery Hall. This, of course, is Stark County Historical Society's operation, but we're very, very closely with them. We help them in terms of collections management, and they are also supporters of the museum. They've helped, of course, with special events and other things. What they've done at Pioneer Machinery Hall is you'll see that they've improved the building considerably. It should now be available for use several more months in any given year. This was a $65,000 project that added insulation and drywall and HVAC system and ceiling fans and what have you, which was supported by a $20,000 grant from the North Dakota State Historical Society. The remainder of the fund solely coming from the Stark County Historical Society. So it's an attraction here in Dickinson that benefits from their generosity and their hard work. Challenges and opportunities in Prairie Outpost Park. There is a lot of stuff I want to get done in Prairie Outpost Park this summer and into next year and beyond. One of the things I think is an opportunity for us to kind of stretch our dollars in regards to support is to go to the BNSF Foundation for dollars for both preservation of the South Heart Depot and also the caboose. The South Heart Depot, of course, originally was a Northern Pacific and then a Burlington Northern structure, and the caboose itself was directly gifted by what was then Burlington Northern. I have talked to representatives for the BNSF Foundation, and they are very interested in looking at a grant, a grant application from us for that work. Some other miscellaneous things that we've done, and these aren't necessarily really sexy and exciting things, but we've established offsite collection, storage in the old Public Works Building on West Broadway Street. That eases a lot of overcrowding in our, especially our history collections area. We did replace the roof covering on both the Yocum and the dinosaur museums. You remember that was my last visit here to ask for approval for that. Also, we are moving ahead forward with that automatic door install. In fact, I was informed today that they are planning to be in, to do that on Wednesday. And then also, our scheduled, we are scheduled for the parking lot and chip seal work, and it's actually, they're promising next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Just really kind of depends on what the weather's going to be doing for us. We've integrated the museum telephone systems into one operation. We've established that one entrance operation at the museum, and we are now open on summer Sundays. We are continuing with the support of Stark County Historical Society and the Yocum Board to scan the extensive photo collections. And then we are also working to curb some vandalism problems in Prairie Outpost Park, which the police department has given us some pretty good tips on, and I think we've gotten a little bit of a handle on that and hope to in the future install some more lighting and then some security cameras in the park, hopefully through next year's budget, so that we can keep an eye on those things and protect those resources. Just wanted to bring you a picture of our installed repurposed lights on the front walkway. If you remember my illustration from when I came here and asked for this project to be approved, this looks a little better than my attempt to mask in the lights from an outside source before. This turned out really, really well. Gives us a lot of terrific light in the museum area now. I think that's part of what's going to help to deter any kind of vandalism, is when we're able to do that kind of lighting along the park walkways as well. Some other things that we've got coming on pretty soon, paleontology program, as I said, Dr. Fowler is in the field right now. Dr. Fowler, you know, he's a 40-year-old kid when he gets out in the field. I've gotten some really terrific emails and phone calls from him, very excited about some of the things that they're finding out there, and he's going to be reporting on that come fall. Also in fall, the Stark County Historical Society will do a grand reopening of their Pioneer Machinery Hall. As I mentioned earlier, our claws exhibit will be coming along in fall. We're going to be moving the triceratops skull out of the lab and into the main display space. It's never been out in the main display space before, so we're very excited about that. We will do again the Halloween children's event, and the other thing to accomplish in fall, of course, is to button up everything in Prairie Outpost Park for the winter. Just some other things on our list of things to do. Achieve federal repository status for the paleo collection. That'll be Dr. Fowler be leading that effort. That allows us to store federal collections on-site and also allows Dr. Fowler to go out with his team to collect materials off of federal lands, and basically, we are the home repository for those materials then. They aren't necessarily things that come on loan from other institutions. We're going to continue to promote and develop our education programs. We want to increase our school visits and our offsite opportunities. We want to brand and market the new dinosaur museum name, Badlands Dinosaur Museum. Cheryl will remember this. We got together with several people, representatives of the city government, other city attractions and what have you, to sit down and talk about a new name, because, of course, we couldn't use Dakota Dinosaur Museum, and this is what was put forward, and that's what we want to work for, is to make Badlands Dinosaur Museum the place you want to stop in Dickinson. Again, I always harp on this. I want to catch up on the deferred maintenance in Prairie Outpost Park. We want to grow our volunteer program. We have that in place. That's been something that's been really great to see, get underway. HR department has helped us considerably on the whys and wherefores of what we need to do for that program. We want to establish a membership program. We have people who are coming to us, asking us about memberships so that they can support the museum and its operation further. So we want to bring that to the table in the near future to get a blessing on that. We think it's an opportunity not just for membership levels for individuals and families who want to visit multiple times a year, but also we want to look at a tier, a few tiers for business-type sponsorships, and then also some special annual sponsorships for instance, if somebody wants to step forward and support our field work for the season. And that of all, again, kind of ties into the last thing, which is to continue to see outside support for special projects, exhibits, et cetera. That's my report. If you'd have any questions.
Thank you, Director Furman. Any questions for Director Furman? Questions, comments? I think things are looking pretty good.
Thanks.
So, thank you very much for the report.
You're very, very welcome.
Thank you. All right, before we get to our timetable, I think we have time for the hiring journal. Mrs. Nomack?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. At the top of our list, police officers. Right now, we have three openings. We recently did interviews and made a conditional offer and have the position reopened for the other two positions. We have a communication specialist position open. We'll be doing interviews this week for that position. Recently, we had a firefighter position open. That is still open. We're taking applications still on that. Museum visitor services attendant, that's a limited hour position that has been filled. The city attorney position, an offer has been made and declined for that position, so we will begin our process again for trying to fill that position. Accounting technician, we did hire a payroll person to help us out in accounting full-time, and she's been on board and doing a wonderful job. Senior engineering tech has been a really difficult position for us. We've had it open multiple times, and just recently, that position did close. We have not started the interview process yet on that, but one applicant again for that, so we're not seeing a lot of applicants. We had a public works administrative assistant position open again, and that position has been filled, and she has started. We have two openings, or did, for the senior water utility operator position. Those were internal openings and promotions, and those have already taken place and have been filled, which left two water utility operator positions open. We did those interviews last week, and no offers have been made. We're still contemplating those candidates. Water admin assistant, they are looking to fill a limited hour position for that, and those interviews are taking place today. We have one opening in the wastewater treatment plant for an operator, and those positions will be, that will be interviewed as well this week for that position. Solid waste landfill operator position, we did hire someone for that position, and that has been filled. And then we have one limited hour library assistant position that we're advertising for right now.
Any comments, questions? Or HR coordinator, Nomack? So right now, Mrs. Nomack, we have basically three positions, or two plus the police department.
Right.
The fire department and the limited hour librarian.
Correct.
And then our police opening.
Yes.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Kessel, can you get yours in in four minutes?
I think so.
All right.
If you would just mind taking one and passing it down, appreciate that. What you have before you is a rendering of a land sale that we'd like to, or a land that we'd like to put up for sale. Just to orientate yourself, the post office is on the south side, and then the apartment building is the structure kind of on just east of that. And we're talking about the parking lot just south of city hall. So hopefully, everybody's orientated. The red roof on the right side of the building is the daycare facility that's kitty-corner from city hall. So on that sheet of paper, you'll notice that there's a slightly darkened line that starts on the west side, travels south, and then goes east just, just in front of that dashed line, jogs a little bit south again, and then goes all the way to the property line on the east side, and then it travels north to the corner and then west to the other point. So you have kind of a slightly different rectangle.
Talk about right here or not? Where's the post office?
Are we all orientated to make sure we're all on the same page here?
Okay, got it.
Okay. So what we'd like to do is put the piece of land for sale that I just mentioned that's inside that darkened line, that darkened area. We did do a survey to make sure that we're sized appropriately. Planner Hadley mentioned that we may have to look at that just a little bit to make sure our pins are accurate. We only want to do this once. But this is the land that we'd like to sell. We'd like to put some parameters on that sale. The first one is that the construction of a building would have to occur within 12 months of the consummated land sale. We'd like to see that size of that building be at least 20,000 square feet, and that it be used for an entertainment purpose. On the buyer's side, not only would the price be $100,000, but they'd also be responsible for moving the utilities that currently exist in the alleyway that kind of traverses that piece of property. We would have to go through the vacation process and formally vacate that property. What happens in a vacation process is, once that's done, is whoever owns the land on either side of the vacated alleyway would now become the owner of the land that we vacate. So whoever buys this land would automatically be the recipient of that. There would be a small portion that the United States Postal Service would receive. If you notice that little notch kind of in the alleyway there, there'd be a small piece that they would receive as part of that vacation process. I have met with the local interim postmaster about that, and we've actually talked to a gentleman in DC to see if that's a piece that they'd like to maintain long-term or if they'd like to gift back to the city of Dickinson so they don't have to maintain it. or if they'd like to gift back to the city of Dickinson so they don't have to maintain it or we buy it for a dollar. So I don't have an answer on that, but we are looking at that as a possibility. We would have to escrow the deed. So whoever would come forward to potentially buy this structure, we'd have to put the deed in and escrow until our parameters are met, meaning the building is constructed and it's done within our timeframe. And we're also looking into, and when I say we, I mean Haley, is looking into if we can put additional parameters like, we want the buyer to make the improvements. We don't want to see this as a property that gets flipped and resold. Again, we want the end user to be the person or company that buys it from us. So we're looking into that as well. I should mention that we sold land approximately five or six years ago to Horner Radikowski, just down the street. We received, I believe, $3 a square foot for that property. So selling this property at the price that I mentioned is closer to $5 a square foot. So we are seeing almost a doubling, or at least a two-thirds higher cost. So I believe that's within the realm of reality. So I'd like to answer any questions you have. I know we're approaching the 5 o'clock timeframe, so.
Can we wait till after the timetable?
Sure.
And then?
Absolutely.
Everybody can digest this a little bit. And then, so we'll start with the timetable. 5 o'clock, we have a public hearing for rezoning. Pluen subdivision, did I say that correctly? And Planning Director Hadley?
Yes, Mr. President. It's ordinance 1638. It's actually a zone change from rural residential, from agricultural to rural residential, so that subdivision can take place. It's a three-acre site on the southeast corner of exit 56. There weren't any public comments on this item, and the planning commission and staff would recommend approval. We do need separate motions for both of these items.
This is the first reading. So if there's anybody from the public would like to come forward, have any concerns or questions for either Director Hadley or the commission, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public has any concerns, close the public hearing. Any questions from commissioners for Mr. Hadley? I know Mr. Frederick and myself both sit on the zoning, so if you have any questions for us also.
What's the ordinance number?
1638.
Move to approve ordinance 1638.
We have a motion to approve 1638.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We also have a resolution for the final plat of the Pluen subdivision. Mr. Hadley?
Yes, Mr. President. It's Resolution 10-2017, and it's for the previously described piece of property. It is creating a three-acre parcel in that what will be a rural residential zone when this is complete. Once again, it went through the public hearing process. Staff and the planning commission would both recommend approval.
All right, any questions for Mr. Hadley on this resolution? The resolution number is?
10-2017.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Hadley on this resolution?
Move to approve resolution.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 10-2017.
Second.
And a second. Further comments or questions? We'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution is passed. Next up, we have a public hearing for a special use permit at 3291 110th. Is that correct address on there?
It is.
110th B Avenue for a music studio. Mr. Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is for a home occupation, special use permit for a home recording studio. The home that you see shown up there has an existing apartment, and the applicant has been practicing music in that particular apartment for a while, but he actually wants to do a recording studio for the local talent. He has soundproofed it, did go through the public hearing process as well. There were no comments from the public, and the planning commission and staff would recommend approval of this.
All right, any questions for Director Hadley on the special use permit?
Mr. President, you want to know if 110th Avenue Southwest is correct or like it's out of town and everything, but that's strictly because it's in our ETZ we're addressing this, correct? This is outside city limits, but within our ETZ.
That's correct. It's in our zoning jurisdiction, yes.
I've never seen 110B, you know, as.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Hadley, I just have a question. When we grant special use permits, does the city have to follow up every year or two years? I'm not sure on that process.
Yes, Commissioner. We actually started a few years ago following up on the special use permits that we've been granting since I've been here. The ones previous to that, we have, but I don't know that we followed up at the same level. But every year, at the end of the year, we do follow up with all of our special use permits. Like this one, obviously, we probably won't follow up with it at the end of the year unless we get a, receive a complaint. But all the ones that we have, we do. We have a spreadsheet that we follow up and definitely pay attention to them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Hadley?
I would move to approve special use permit.
We have a motion to approve the special use permit.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are a little bit ahead of our 510. I guess we can go back to the land sale quick. If there's any questions for Mr. Kessel? Comments?
Mr. President, Mr. Kessel, how many parking lots are we going to lose with this sale?
Parking lots or parking spaces, Commissioner?
Parking spaces, excuse me.
The intent, it's a great question. I'm glad you asked that. We have parking that would remain on the south side of this property, north of the apartment building that I mentioned. The pathway for the postal service, that alley would remain in existence so that the drop-off location could still be used, but the turn, the access, or the egress would be just north of the apartment, and then cars would dump onto First Avenue East. They do just a little earlier than they do today. So there's about 85, I believe, or 88 parking spaces in total in that parking area. We will maintain around 20, early twenties in the space on the west side, and there'll be another about 25 to 30 on the south. And then the intent is to use the revenue from the sale of this land and create a parking lot north of City Hall. We own the majority of the property on just north of City Hall. The only one we don't own is the one immediately adjacent from the alley. But we own all three of the other homes up there. We used to use those for residences, for new staff, when oil activity was at its peak. We no longer are requiring the need of those buildings, and so we would move them off-site or offer them for sale so people could move them out of the community if they chose to. Then we'd be able to recover another about 35 parking places there. And the thought process is that all city staff would park on that lot in order to free up all the parking around it, whether that's on-street parking or within this lot. So all said and done, we're going to be real close to about even. We may lose about five with the addition of the parking lot on the north side of City Hall.
That's going to be the main concern with everybody downtown. It'd be nice to see a parking lot below or above the structure. You know, we've always discussed something like that, but I guess we'll follow and see where it goes.
We did pave the lot immediately west of American Bank Center, so that lot is now used for parking, and we plan to continue to pave the lot just south of Vallard and west of the railroad property. So granted, that property can, you can park in it today, but it's not, it's not a hard surface. So it might help more people park there than our union today.
The only question I have, why doesn't the post offices' drive-through dump out of their, off of their property instead of some ours?
That's a great question. I can't answer that, Commissioner Frederick. This has been in existence for quite some time.
I mean, is there an agreement that says that they can access it that way? Why, I mean, why can't they go to Sims instead of the first?
And through the postal service property?
Yeah.
I don't have, it's a good question that I can ask them.
I mean, it just seems to make sense to me, you know, why we would maintain a parking lot for their customers to drive over. Yeah. Or a road or whatever it's going to be, so.
Okay, if anyone has any more questions or comments, we'll hold. We're up to the 510.
Okay.
Till afterwards. We have a public hearing for a special use permit for Happy Hounds daycare. City Attorney Kreip?
Commissioner Decker, I believe Ms. Benstock sent out a memorandum this morning outlining some research that I did prior to tonight's meeting regarding the special use permit that's being requested for Happy Hounds daycare. The Planning and Zoning Commission met at their last meeting to consider the application for a special use permit under the home occupation designation for Happy Hounds, and made a recommendation that the commission not offer that special use permit and decline the application. The reason.
Ms. Kreip, do you know what the vote was on that?
It was unanimous.
Well, it'd have to be in order to make the recommendation, but do you know what the actual vote was?
It was, there was no enais.
Pardon?
There was no enais. I chaired that meeting.
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous. There was, and I can explain, and the reason why is there just isn't a place in our ordinance that specifically addresses this type of business.
Right. So the application is for a home occupation, and I don't know if you've got the code sections from our code that are referenced, but I can send, I think Ms. Benstock sent those to you this morning as well, so they're in your email if they're not in your packet. But the definition of home occupation under the city code is found at 32.02.011 sub-paragraph 2. After reviewing that, for a home occupation, there can't be any change in the amount of traffic going to or from the location, which was one factor considered. But the main factor that was considered in determining that a home occupation was not, that this would not fit the definition of a home occupation or the code, is that a home occupation has to be conducted entirely within the structure. And by nature, this, an in-home pet service is not because the dogs would be in the backyard. And so the code is specific about that, that it has to be conducted entirely within a dwelling unit. So that was the reason that the Planning and Zoning Commission felt they couldn't approve the special use permit for a home occupation because of that definition. So then the rest of the research went into what other designation under our current code. You know, as Commissioner Frederick mentioned, there's not a designation for dog daycare in the Dickinson city code right now. There's not a definition for it. And so what, and there's not a definition for every possible use, but what the planning department does or what buildings and sites, or building inspectors do, is determine under a similar use that could be allowed. And that's part of the code, that's similar use language. So looking at what we have in current code, the determination of planning and zoning and city staff is that the closest possible use under what we have defined as pet services. And those also are not allowed to apply for a special use permit in R1. Those are commercial-only designations. So that was the other factor considered in that hearing. And then I did some research. The third part of that memorandum explains. I did research on a number of other cities in North Dakota, including Grand Forks, Fargo, Bismarck, Mandan, Jamestown, Williston, Minot, and West Fargo. A couple of the cities didn't have language regarding in-home non-overnight care. I think we're all clear that this business does not operate as a kennel, which is distinguished by overnight care from this in-home pet services designation. So those cities weren't included, but Mandan is probably the, is the only one that allows any form of it. But their cap is at four animals in the home, including the owners. And you have to get the special use permit. And four is the number of animals you can have, or the number of dogs you can have in Mandan as a personal owner. So that's where that number comes from. So in Dickinson, that number would be three, and that includes the owner's own animals. And then Minot, in particular, was another one that was very specific. They have a definition for dog daycare. They don't allow it in even, they have a designation for residential-commercial. They don't allow it at all there, and it's allowed with a conditional use permit in commercial designations. And Grand Forks, Fargo, were the same, where it was commercial-only.
Any questions for Mrs. Kreip on her extensive ordinance research? I guess, or comments for Mr. Frederick or questions for the Planning and Zoning? I was absent at that meeting. VA doesn't move appointments.
Mr. President, I have a question. I know you said that the city and Planning and Zoning kind of agreed on the pet services description. I watched that meeting, and I didn't get that Planning and Zoning necessarily agreed that that is the category that this business should fall under.
It wasn't at this last meeting. It was at the meeting a couple of months ago when we first received the application and when the Planning and Zoning Commission offered to allow the applicant to withdraw their application and not pay the application fee or have that refunded. So that would have been February, probably?
February or March, yeah. It was, the planning commission actually, we brought this item or this use to them to classify it, and it had nothing to do with the special use permit, home occupation. It was the same subject, yes, but we were trying to classify it, and the planning commission classified it under pet services, and they were in agreement under there. This last meeting, no. This was, that was a discussion on this home occupation under that reclassification of that use. So staff and the planning commission agreed a few months ago. Any applicant was waiting. They had that application in, yes. We had to figure out where we were going to classify that, that particular use in our code, and that's what we were doing then, so. Hopefully, that helps.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I know that, I mean, at that meeting, I mean, there was some commissioners that asked staff, direct, asked staff to put together an ordinance to maybe look at changing what we have. I mean, there was a couple absent. Mr. Jackson was absent, Mr. Decker was absent. And out of the ones that were there, I mean, I feel that there was, there was an open mind, you know, to looking at doing some kind of change to this ordinance. You know, maybe changing what pet services is, or at least put a definition in our code. But that doesn't really solve the problem we have now. That would take several months.
Well, Mr. President, I visited this business just because I wanted to make sure before we make our decisions up here that we have some understanding of how this business works. When I entered, a dog barked one time, and there was a total of 10 there. They were extremely well behaved. They're not allowed inside the home at all. They occupy the garage, and then they have access to the backyard. You know, as far as I can see, this is, she's really done her homework. And she's been in contact with the city, I mean, when I looked at the emails that were provided, since the beginning of November of 2016. She spoke with Fire Marshal Selly, Chief Gossinger, Mr. Schwent, the Department of Health, Mr. Prowse. She has insurance. You know, from the documents she's reported, she's really done her due diligence in trying to do what's right. And I know the reason that they initially did not apply for the special use permit is because they thought that they fell under the daycare category, which I know that's kind of a hot topic. Like I said, I watch Planning and Zoning meetings, so I know where that kind of direction took. But, you know, I don't. took, but, you know, I don't mean to offend anyone, but it is very, very similar to that business model. And I know one of the arguments was, well, for a home-based business, you have to occupy within that infrastructure, but if you look at daycares, they occupy a yard as well. So I don't, I don't know, I just, I have a really tough time with this one, because they are a great business that is an asset to this community.
Commissioner Jennings, the reason there's a difference between the daycares and the home occupation and that requirement is that daycares is a defined use under the code, and they don't have that requirement to maintain entirely within the structure, whereas the home occupation does.
Okay.
So, the issue that, you know, we're running into is that, right now, they applied for a special use permit for a home occupation, and it doesn't meet the definition. So, that's where planning and zoning came from. No one has any qualms about the fact that she seems to run a very well-run business, and there's no complaints about that from the city side, we don't have any comments about that. The problem is, the code doesn't allow it, and so for the city to continue to allow a disallowed use, it sends a, it sends an awkward message to the public that if you start something and it goes well, even if it's not allowed under the law, it's fine.
I totally agree, and I, you know, I, I agree with what Mr. Schwent said at the meeting, when he said it's hard to enforce the rules when, you know, we're not, we don't have support, and I completely understand that. And that was one of my questions as well, is when we grant those special use permits, do we follow up? You know, and if we were to grant this business a special use permit, we would have the opportunity to revoke that, correct?
There is a review process, and it could be rescinded. And Planning Director Hadley, you know, if we would do a special use permit, typically there can be some restrictions or conditions put on that. So for example, the, the one just prior with the recording studio, one of the conditions that Mr. Hadley discussed with the applicant was soundproofing. The reason it wasn't a condition of the permit is that he already had done that work. So that was, you know, communication that happened prior, but there can be conditions that are placed on those special use permits, and then a violation of those would cause the city to revoke the permit.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I, I think it's a fantastic business. I think it's great. I just don't think it belongs on residential R1 zone. I, you know, we need to protect the integrity of R1 single-family zones. It's supposed to be residential living areas, not special use permit areas. In this case here, you know, the email we got from one of the neighbors up there has a lot of good information in it, and, you know, one of them is, she talks about the home being devalued if they ever wanna sell, and, and I think that's probably one of the most important things here. If I had a home there and I was gonna sell it, I don't think my realtor would put in the paper fantastic location, two doors down from a doggy daycare that has ten to thirty dogs. I don't think that would bring multiple buyers, I think that would keep multiple buyers away. You know, so, and I think we all have to agree that it's not gonna improve the value of your home by having this type of business on that premise. You know, so I think we gotta give a lot of consideration to that. I know we got two here, and to be perfectly honest, I had four other ones call me, they did not give me their name, but they were opposed to it. They did not give me their name, and that's fine with me, I usually don't like that, but in the neighborhood, you still wanna be neighbors and disagree, but not blow up the neighborhood. You know, so, the Plan and Zoning Committee has voted twice to deny this permit. I think they've thought it through. I would have to vote to deny this here special use permit.
Any other comments or questions for Mrs. Kreip?
As always, I appreciate the research that Mrs. Trustum did. Thank you for going to the site, thanks for, on our behalf, going and checking it out. It's a public hearing, I guess I would like to see where the public hearing goes and make our decision based on that.
I just have one comment. I mean, I did visit the site also, and then I did talk to the neighbor directly behind, just on my own, because I know who he is, and he, he did not have any issue with the site. He said there's no issues with dogs barking, there's, you know, if they are barking a little bit, then she's out there right away getting them in or telling them to stop, so, I mean, it's a tough one. I, I mean, I think Planning and Zoning had issue with just that, we didn't know where to put it, so.
My feelings on it is, is that is what we need to address.
Exactly.
We need to go through the process to, to address that, to, to craft the, the appropriate language or category in an ordinance. Right now, we, that is our main problem. We don't wanna just grant special use permits after the fact, because we're gonna, we're gonna continue to see this then. So there's gonna be things that continue to fall outside of what we have in the code. So, for me, I'd like to hear from the public too, before we make a decision, but I'm very open to crafting, because I do sit on Planning and Zoning, crafting language to allow this, and, and in the meantime, maybe there's a remedy that we can provide.
An extension or whatever.
Whatever the commission's desire is. So, it is a public hearing, I will open it up to the public. There's only so much room up there, I know there's a lot.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm Jessica Iran, as you know, again, from Happy Hounds. Our business has been in limbo since the call from the city in October of 2016, so we are here today to ask that you look at our business model and either see that we fit in a similar use under the daycare code, or to task you to let us continue to operate while a code is put into place for a pet daycare. I will try to not take up too much of your time, this isn't for lack of passion or argument for my business, it is just for the fact that we have been to three planning and zoning meetings and a couple of city commission meetings, so I believe that you all have a pretty good idea of what is going on already. To date, there has been zero formal complaints to the Dickinson PD, and that was verified by Jen Gross, our attorney, through open records request. We have been to around five meetings with no business complaints, other than two anonymous letters, that in all reality have very little facts and a lot of presumptions and/or assumptions. We have testimony from our direct neighbors who are directly affected. We have tried to go through the proper meetings and channels after we were notified that this needed to be done. Upon this journey, we have ran into hurdle after hurdle with the city process and procedures on making this work. We run a very professional business that operates smoothly and was based off the model of a home daycare-type business. Once again, I point out, we are not asking you to compare dogs to children. We are strictly talking the business side and the impact to the neighborhood with this type of business. The code reads as below. Daycare Services Family, this use type includes all classifications of daycare facilities, including but not limited to, facilities licensed by the state of North Dakota, providing care for not more than nine individuals. This term includes nursery schools, preschools, daycare centers for children or adults and similar uses, but excludes public and primary, private, primary, and secondary educational facilities. The second is Daycare Services Group. This use type includes all classifications of daycare facilities, including facilities licensed by the state of North Dakota, providing care for ten or more individuals. This term includes nursery schools, preschools, daycare centers for children or adults and similar uses, but excludes public and private, primary, and secondary educational facilities. You will notice the highlighted portion, that I sent you guys earlier in an email, says children, adults, and similar uses. It calls out children and adults, and then still adds the similar use. I know the code is and can be interpreted different by everyone, but if you just close your eyes, pretend you're our neighbor for a few minutes, and listen to some examples. You have a little added traffic, similar to that of an in-home daycare. This is less than fifteen cars daily, and done while most of our friends and neighbors are already at work. You have the noise aspect in which we already have an outstanding service records. We have been here for three years with zero noise complaints from neighbors or anyone else, not to mention the fact that if the daycare closes, that puts our dogs alone at home during the day instead of being supervised. If the daycare closes, it will not change the fact that we own our own dogs, similar to the fact that if you were to close a child daycare, the family could still have their own children. The aesthetics to the property have not and will not change. If you drove by our house, you would not know there's a business there. There's a privacy fence, no unneeded signs, and we take care of our property. We also want our home value to be kept close to what we paid for, although we understand we bought a house in the oil boom, and that will affect the pricing. Now, if I am thinking with my head here and not my heart, comparing children to dogs, and talking strictly business, we believe strongly that we align well to the similar uses of a daycare operation. We say that knowing that the code is open for interpretation, and that's why we are here today, to explain our side and try to share our thoughts and opinions on the way our business was created and operated, and hopefully will continue to run. We are community-involved, tax-paying, charitable, younger Dickinson residents who want to continue to offer our business to the community. If we were forced to try to move this to a commercial property, unfortunately, we would have to close our doors. This is because this business model is not sustainable with that type of investment. You would need to add kenneling, boarding, more dogs, employees, and unfortunately, we are not in a position to make that happen right now. In closing, we want you to know, we appreciate the time here today and the opportunity to present our case. We hope that you will continue to let us operate under the daycare code, or will come up with a solution that will allow us to continue to operate while a doggy daycare code can be added or constructed. We to date have been to at least five meetings with zero complaints, other than two anonymous letters, which in our opinion should hold little to no value when we have neighbors we invited, and neighbors we had no clue were even coming to testify at the planning and zoning meeting, that they live directly to us and have no issues. That's what I wrote up beforehand, but I wanted to touch base on a couple things you guys talked about, if that's okay too. When you guys discussed the planning and zoning, saying that you decided we were pet services, we were told that was not a formal decision afterwards. At this meeting was one that we were not informed about, we were not there to defend or discuss a lot of the false information that was shared. So, I, not being a formal decision, I don't know how it can be brought now and said that it was decided unanimously that we were pet services. Also, at the January meeting that we attended, we came in front of Planning and Zoning to ask whether we should apply for a special use permit, or if we should start the process of trying to get the code changed. At the January meeting, we were told that there was no reason that it needed to be changed, and that they thought that we would be able to fall under home occupation and apply for a special use permit. I know Commissioner Trustum already mentioned to Haley that the home, falling under home occupation with the children that are allowed in the backyard, and you said that it's different because that's not what they apply for, but we were told child daycares also apply for a special use permit if they are above the group, ten or more individuals, so that's what they would be applying for, is a home occupation. Yes, please.
So, the daycares aren't applying for a home occupation special use permit. What they're applying for is a special use permit if they're ten or more, because that's the group, not family. So you have to have a, you have to have a permit to operate in R1, but daycare is defined and has its own parameters.
Okay.
So what you're doing is applying for home occupation, which is a peer to daycare as far as defined terms in the code.
Okay.
So that's why they're separate definitions.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I wanted to address was the continuing of the false information, such as referring to us having thirty dogs a day. We do not take thirty dogs a day, we have never taken thirty dogs a day. If I took more than ten dogs, we would lose our insurance immediately, which is something that, as a business owner, I can't lose my insurance. So it's very frustrating that things such as complaints that there's no name to, there's no address to, are being referred to when they are full of false information and just the number of dogs we take. We only take ten dogs, we don't board. So, that's all I have for today. Do you have any questions?
Mrs. Iran?
I'm Mr. President.
How many signatures did you collect? I see, we just got them, because they didn't load earlier.
Um, I believe there's forty-seven. I have to look.
And these are neighbors directly on your street?
These are Fourth, Third, and Second Avenue. There are some missing, the only people that didn't sign were people that didn't answer their doors, and I didn't wanna leave information for people that didn't want to be bothered, so I don't think they knew who I was, but not everybody answers their doors for strangers, so. But everybody that I spoke to, either they didn't know we were there, they had no idea there was a doggy daycare in the area, or they knew we were there and they had nothing but praise to say about our cleanliness, quietness.
Any other questions for Mrs. Iran?
Ms. Iran, I, I have one question, and I'm gonna think about the answer. Have you ever kept a dog overnight?
No.
Boarded a dog overnight?
No. I don't board, they're gone by six PM every night.
You've never had a dog overnight, boarded a dog overnight?
No.
Okay, thank you. As far as the signatures of people supporting it, I, I think it's great that you have good neighborhood support. However, I think if I went to a different neighborhood and talked to a neighbor and said, "I plan on buying the house next to you and having up to ten dogs," would you support that? I don't think I've had as much success as you've had with, with my neighbors. Once I think you explain to them what the value can happen to a home, I think a lot of people would reconsider. Now, you might have, like I said, exceptional neighbors, which I'm sure you do, you have some support, but I think some of them out there do not support you. And, again, I, changing the ordinance to allow this type of business there, I don't think is a good way for the city commission to go. You know, single-family residents, for people to enjoy life, enjoy the quietness, and so on, whether you say one dog barts or not, I've been in neighborhoods where they all bark, and it's frustrating sometimes. So, we have to protect, again, that single-family residential area, and I don't think we're doing a good job if we approve this type of special use permit.
With all due respect, Commissioner Steiner, I don't believe that, how home value would change at all, just like-
I think you're absolutely wrong. I think if you ask any realtor, if the value of a $300,000 home would be affected by a home with it with ten dogs in it, I think it may remain 300,000, but you probably aren't gonna get the buyers that would probably wanna buy it. You know, I just, I won't buy that, that it won't affect the value.
Well, children-
There's a reason, there's a reason all these other towns don't want it in single-families.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Hello, Commissioners, I'm Dr. Shelley Lenz, I'm the owner of State Avenue Veterinary Clinic, and I've been working with Jessica Iran with her dogs, and helping her from the get-go. I do wanna say that she's been impeccable in, in addressing preventative disease control, making sure the dogs are behaviorally appropriate, getting CPR license for animals, or certified, but it's not really a license, and so she's done all the medical and preventative medicine things we, that we have. I also wanna add to Mr. Steiner's comments, the demographics of Dickinson are changing, and I know that in my business, and we have a lot of young, professional, working couples that are often delaying childbearing for quite a while, and so they, their, their dogs actually add a quality of life to their life, but they might be working all day. And so, this business enables their own dogs to have mental enrichment all day, so they're not barking in their own home, because they're lonely, and, and this younger demographic, or professional demographic, which is, which we're hoping to bring to Dickinson, just like, I don't know if you've ever seen what's happened to, like, in Colorado and stuff, the more dog-friendly you are, the more quality of life that your young professionals are gonna have. And I personally would be tickled to buy a home that had a doggy daycare right there, because I can go to work on my way.
You might have an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I think that's a hypothetical that might have been true for maybe a different demographic at a different time.
I don't have a problem with dogs, my daughter's got four of them.
No, 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 no.
But she's out in the country.
But, but just like a, a doggy daycare. So I just wanted to speak to that a little bit, that I think it adds a real quality of life to the human population, as well as the dog population. If there's any comments or questions you have for me, but-
Any questions for Dr. Lenz? Thank you. Anyone else from the public come up and speak?
Hi. I own Wolfda, I also run Bakkenpah's Animal Rescue.
Did you state your name?
Tasha Hermanson. So, I don't know, I'm a little bit frustrated with those last few comments. First of all, I wanna say that with the oil boom, my home value- First of all, I want to say that with the oil boom, my home value was 40,000 10 years ago. It shot up to 160,000. This year, it went down 117. Nobody runs a doggy daycare in my neighborhood. So, that's ridiculous and quite unprofessional.
I don't see the correlation.
You don't see the correlation?
No, I don't. You're talking about an economy that was top in the United States, and you're trying to compare it to dogs. I don't, I don't...
Home values, we're talking about home values?
And the effect on home values.
And also, I want to state that I myself would absolutely buy a home next to her.
I think that's great. I'm not denying that there aren't any. I'm just talking about the people that disagree with you, that are thinking about selling your home.
Keep it civil, please.
You're arguing with people that are talking about values of their home going down. You can't disagree with them if they really think that's going to happen.
I don't think that they're going to be that affected. My home was affected a lot.
My statement was, I don't think a home's going to go up in value if you say it's next door to a home with 10 dogs or two dogs down.
Well, my home went up and down due to the boom. Didn't have anything to do with the doggy daycare. I apologize, the way that was brought up, I felt was very unprofessional. As far as the animals needing daycare through the rescue, we get a ton that are high-energy. They need stimulation during the day. Their owners are not able to provide it. So, a doggy daycare offers this. As far as the business aspect, telling her to go commercial, not affordable, not affordable in this town right now. I'm totally not even reading this anymore, but the rent for what we pay, we pay about $7,000 a month for rent for a commercial building. That would not be affordable for somebody earning $200 a day. Absolutely not. My own dog could have benefited from this if it had been around a couple of years ago. She might not have had to have been kennelled for two years, two years of her life. She had to be kennelled while I worked. She's a good girl, but she's nuts. She's absolutely crazy. She needs that stimulation. I had a flexible job where I could check on her. But is there any questions I can answer?
Any questions for Mrs. Hermanson?
No.
Anyone else that wants to come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. I won't take up, excuse me, a lot of your time. I've already submitted a letter in support of the doggy daycare. My name is Jennifer Gross. Three of my dogs attend doggy daycare every day. I'm blessed to be able to do that. I find it to be a benefit to my animals. I have just the opposite problem with a couple of dogs. One's a Basque Hound, so he's a little bit of a chubber. So, this helps her get some exercise and keeps her in better physical condition, which also is going to extend her life. She's almost 11 years old now, and she's really enjoying her life where she hadn't been able to before. I also have a very anxious dog with separation anxiety, and that's really helped that as well. It's really a great asset, I think, to the community to be able to have this available to professionals. I'm a lawyer here in town, and so is my husband, and we do end up working longer hours. And it really is a nice way to be able to augment our lifestyle to have animals. We don't have children, we have dogs, and it's a great way to be able to bring that beneficial aspect of our life. Dogs are calming. We really enjoy having them around, and yes, it's a life choice, and we really are grateful that we're able to have that life choice right now and have it sustained by our community. I do understand that there are many facets to this decision you guys have to make, and I don't necessarily envy you to have to make that, but I do believe that the fact that many neighbors are in support of this and they have done so, signing their support knowing that this animal daycare is present and that if they've signed off saying, "Yes, we agree with this, we want it here, we're fine with it being here," they've accepted that then, and so I feel that that should mitigate some of the concern about the values on the property for that area. So, I would just state that. Thank you guys for your time and thank you for your service to the community. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Ms. Gross?
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Speak for or against Happy Hounds.
Hello. My name is Carrie Messer. Just a quick, just comment on the daycare. I have been bringing my animals to Happy Hounds for three years. I was one of the first new clients that she took in, in her new location. I'm a single woman. I live by myself with my dogs, and I work full days, eight to 10 hours a day. I'm unable to come home for lunch to take care of my dogs. So, knowing that they are safe in a neighborhood, fenced in yard, being watched, being fed, the amount of food that they are, you know, allowed to have without overeating or destroying anything in my home has been a great relief. I do own a dog who, she is part Greyhound, so she has a lot of energy. She likes to be mischievous, so if I leave her at home, she likes to destroy things. So, it's very nice to know that there is someone who's as trustworthy as Jess to take my dogs to. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Messer?
Mr. President, the public hearing, I mean, I think we're going down two different roads here. There is no question, I think she does a wonderful job, there's no question, we all love our pets. Okay. The question is whether it belongs in a single-family residential neighborhood.
Right, and I understand that.
I mean, I understand everything you guys have been saying, absolutely. I love dogs myself. But I don't want 10 of them next to me.
Well, I understand that, and I took my dogs to a daycare in Bismarck. I had a meeting, training meeting down there, and I had to drive 20 minutes out of town to take my dogs to this daycare. I did not, I was not aware of where this location was when I made an appointment for them to be watched, and it was just very out of the way. I guess I understand what you're saying, there's a place and everything, but the fact that if you were there, you would not know that these dogs were there. Like, it's, the noise complaints and everything are just, it is not really true.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Messer? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Joanna Fuchs, and I've taken my dog on and off to Jessica for two years. I guess I just, we all know what a great business she runs and what a neat and clean place it is, but one of the things I would point out is the fact that just right down the road is a brand-new Able House. And exactly a block over from that Able House is another brand-new Able House. And first of all, if I found out there was a doggy daycare in my neighborhood, I would jump and say, "Yes, I think that's a wonderful, wonderful thing." But in, you know, your comment about zoning, I have to think that there may be more people that might have a problem with the fact that there's an Able House with a number of different professionals, a number of different caregivers coming and going at all hours than a doggy daycare, which has set hours and, you know, pretty much set traffic during certain hours. I also believe that, well, when I first took the dog there, I had no, I missed the house. I had no idea there was a daycare there. I've seen child daycares that stood out like a sore thumb with all kinds, and don't get me wrong, I love, I love children, but there are no toys, there is no fencing, other than a nice vinyl fence around the backyard. That would alert anybody to the fact that there is a business here. I think that's it.
Any comments or questions? Anyone else from the public? Come forward.
Good day, City Commissioners. My name is James Bernard, local citizen, business owner. I do believe that a doggy daycare can operate in a residential setting with correct procedure of due diligence, accountability. I think it's very feasible, simple. I think that we live in a world where power of complaint, do we take confidence from complaints? Do we take security from complaints? As a public servant myself, like, I live by complaint, but I also live by accountability and facing up to what I do every day. And I feel no threat. I've learned from this experience, still to stand here and say, I don't see any issues with this. There are, I mean, I guess there are issues, but there are issues of just feasibility, like, just getting accountability and getting special use permits and having due diligence, like, with anything, with childcare, with anything. So, just as a citizen, I just say, I think that that's one thing nobody has said yet, is that, yes, I do believe that they have a place. So, that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
I'm Chad Yiran, Jessica's husband. I also work from home. I run a technology business and have for six years. I take technical phone calls every day, 40 to 50 calls a day. The noise isn't there. You wouldn't know that the daycare is there. I agree with you, it could affect home value, but so could a lot of things. So could buying a house next to a daycare. So could buying a house next to the city building. It's a choice that people would have to make, and if you leave it up to the realtor to sell that. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Ms. Yiran?
No.
Good evening. My name is Shonda Lemke. I'm just a concerned citizen. I am a customer of Happy Hounds and have been going for over a year. I would just also like to point out, when I moved into Dickinson and got on all the Facebook pages, I was alarmed at the amount of missing dogs, lost dogs, posted every single day. And I just would like to comment, by having something like Happy Hounds, and I know the whole issue is zoning, but if you think about it, you have 10 responsible pet owners that take their dog there that are not loose on the streets, using city resources to gather them up to the pound, into the shelter, and off to the rescues. So, if we could also take into consideration the asset that this business is to our community.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Lemke? Anyone else from the public that would like to come forward? Please come forward. If you have any questions, concerns, state your name. Seeing no one else from the public, let's come forward. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Here's what I find fascinating, is as a commissioner for the last eight years, we've had other uses come before us. And I remember that over by Prairie Rose Elementary, just north of that, we had a request for a use for a drug rehab facility, which is a use that our community could definitely have used. We opened it up to public hearing, and during the recourse of that, we had the supporters, but we also had the people that were opposed to having that in their neighborhood. And their opposition wasn't an anonymous letter or an anonymous email. They came before us and they spoke passionately of why they either wanted or didn't want the facility. I think what the missing piece on this one is, is the opposition, to be honest. The only opposition that we've had to this has come in the form of anonymity. And I find that to be a fascinating aspect of this, that if there was a true desire not to have this, that people would be, we would have opposition on both sides. I'm not finding that with this issue. You're finding that you have a well-run, well-respected business. And frankly, the opposition isn't there, and I think that our challenge and mission is, much as you said earlier, President Decker, is to take a look at the code. Just because it is a new business and one that has not been in our community before, there's always been new businesses that have come into our community that we've had to make adjustments or concessions for. I don't see how this falls in any other category.
Any other comments, questions?
Just a comment. This is, I believe, is what, our third public hearing on this matter, between planning and zoning and city commission? We have yet to have one person come speak in opposition in person, and we've advertised it, I mean, I mean, that's the whole city. So, I follow where you are with that, Mr. Oldman. The second thing is, sitting on planning and zoning, we've looked at several items. I mean, the world is changing. I mean, communities are changing, young professionals are changing in their needs. People believe in, you know, healthy foods. I mean, not that long ago, we sat and talked about chickens in your backyard, and we had ordinances, none from North Dakota, but some from South Dakota, where they actually allowed, including Sioux Falls, which is the biggest city, I believe, in South Dakota. I mean, and it's, when I did the research on that, that is a national trend. That is not something that is just brand-new. You're seeing more and more of that every day, and maybe this is one of those items. I don't know if it is or not, but, I mean, just because the other cities in North Dakota don't allow it, doesn't mean that we have to not allow it either.
Mr. President, Mandan does allow a doggy daycare as a home occupation, but it does have some limitations there. You know, I said earlier, I was able to go see the business, and, you know, 10 sounds like such a big number, but when I got there, there was no barking, the dogs were very well behaved. I would never in a million years have thought that 10 dogs would be so quiet, so well-behaved, and leave such a minimal mark on their property. So, I mean, if we're looking at an ordinance, I mean, we have one similar to the, we could look at one similar to Mandan's and maybe work with the numbers allowed.
Any more comments, Mr. Steiner? Mr. Castle?
As a, city staff has, in the past, approached the city commission about establishing a business license in town, and I just want to mention it again because I think we could have prevented all of this heartache if we would have had the business license in advance because then we could have crafted the ordinance beforehand, we could have maybe looked at the situation differently to avoid 12 months or however long the situation is that Mr. and Mrs. Yiran have gone through. Previous commissions have said no to a business license, but I just want to bring that up as we look at what sounds like a revision of the ordinance to consider a business, even if there's not a fee. At least we would know who's operating where and be able to proactively look at these issues rather than reacting and having to have the community go through this type of a situation. Thank you.
I would be open to that because times are a-changing. We'll just put it that way. And there are a lot more people that have dogs rather than children or whatever pet. I'm sure Dr. Lenz can tell you, there's a whole plethora of animals that she sees that are people's, you know, their children. So, my feelings, as I stated earlier, I would be in support of addressing through the code so that we do this the right way. And in the meantime, I feel we should allow, under the special use permit, under the daycare because of the other, until then, until we... because of the other, until then, until we have it crafted, and then we can slot it properly. Because I do think they provide a valuable service. And I think there's maybe opportunity for other people also, but we have to have some kind of standards also, like the amount of dogs. We have to address that, and that can go through planning and zoning, start that process. But I think tonight, we do owe these people an answer.
I would recommend you do that to speed it up.
Right.
We can see where it's going, so I have no problem with that. So, you know, to benefit, I think we should allow her to continue the way she is, okay? And get this here, and get it through, so we make her conform to an ordinance. So, that doesn't mean I'm in favor of it, you know?
I understand.
I can count. And I still like dogs. So, I don't want anything in the paper that says Carson Steiner hates dogs, okay? I like dogs. Cats, maybe not. But anyway, I would recommend that's what you do, because, you know, it's a great business and everything.
No, I think we need to, there has to be a code, and there has to be something they fall under. So, we need to craft something, run it through planning and zoning, but in the meantime, allow them to operate under special use permit, which, Mr. Hadley, they monitor for compliance until we can craft the proper code and slot them that way. And I also believe what Mr. Kessel said, I would be in favor of a business license, be it whatever nominal fee to cover at least our administrative, you know, costs of processing. This then stops this from happening, a business license permit, whatever it may be. That way, at least, planning and zoning can see it, Mr. Hadley can see it, Mr. Schwint can see it, before somebody just goes ahead and opens up the business and we're running through this for eight months again.
Commissioner Decker, I would recommend not approving the special use permit under the daycare, because I have a different interpretation of the code, the way the commas are placed. It doesn't, the other similar uses, if you say that you're going to allow it under the other similar uses, you're saying dogs are a similar use to children. And in six months, if we do this doggy daycare ordinance, you're gonna have to change your interpretation. So, what I would say is just allow an extension, if that's what you want.
And I'd be fine with that, too, while we craft this, the ordinance.
And it is on the planning and zoning agenda for the next meeting to discuss possible drafts of an ordinance. So, we are handling this expeditiously.
Okay, so what we need to do is give them an extension.
That would be my recommendation, based on the future.
What's the realistic timing for us to draft an ordinance, pass it, deny it, whatever?
Yeah.
What's realistic?
Two public hearings and such.
Right. So, the next, the next planning and zoning meeting, we can have drafts put together. So, that would be in a few weeks here. If planning and zoning likes one of the drafts we put together, they can recommend that organs to you. And then you could have it as soon as the first meeting in September, likely. But it might be the second meeting in September and the first meeting in October, so...
So, if we would grant them an extension, let's just say to the end of the year.
I think that's... I think that's it.
Okay. Mr. Hadley?
Yes, Mr. President. Attorney Crype, I think that we would have to, we'd have discussion, and then we'd have to have a public hearing at planning. So, we would have to notice that for the following...
I think it's gonna extend it, that's why I'm coming...
For the following month, and then we could bring it to you. So, I would say, my suggestion, if Attorney Crype's all right with that, is that we start the process and that you give them the reprieve until we're completed with the process. And then they would have to apply through whatever...
We don't have to set a date on an extension?
I would set one, just for procedural purposes, so everyone knows the sunset. I also think it, I don't know how long I'm gonna be...
You could extend it again, right?
Right, you could do that. I don't know how long I'm gonna be here. I think it's good to have some goal setting and some deadlines, so...
I would agree, December 31st, and if something goes awry between now and then, we can always... That motion you need?
Yeah, do we act, do we actually deny the special use permit then?
I would say you just table it for now, and then the applicant could possibly amend their application later without having to redo the whole process, if we find some definition for dog daycare, and, you know, they might not even need it at that point, but I would just table it for now.
Okay. I would look for a motion to table the special use permit.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to table a special use permit in a second. Any further discussion? We'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The special use permit is tabled. I would also look for a motion to give them an extension.
I would make that motion to December 31st.
We have a motion, you have an extension till December 31st.
Second.
And with a second.
Of seventeen, yes.
What's that?
Of seventeen seventeen.
Of two thousand seventeen, yes. Yeah, he'll clarify that.
Okay.
That'll come back to bite us. So, we have a motion to extend their business till, can remain in operation until December 31st of 2017. We have a motion for that in a second. Any further questions, discussions, staff? Okay, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're gonna move this along. All right. Back to land sale.
You might have to start over. You might have to start over. It's been a while.
You're really invited to all stay. We have, you know, some amendments, the engineering stuff, you can stay. Sorry, engineers, no fans for you tonight, so... All right, we'll move on to this continued discussion on this land sale.
I'd like to answer any questions. I believe I've completed my presentation, but I'd love to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Do you think we need public hearings on that sale?
The process of the land sale, you, I'm not asking you to choose a buyer today, I'm just asking to put the land actually for sale, but you'll be the ones to decide who will be the buyer at the end of the day.
Because they're gonna present us with a plan in, that's related to what our stipulations are.
Correct. As long as you've got stipulations, they'll have to be in compliance.
We're gonna have concerns about the parking, so we gotta have answers for that. That means if we're gonna put this up for sale, we might as well get something ready for those other, you know, because we gotta replace that parking. We can't have fifty vehicles that were there, looking around town for another spot, you know? We're gonna have to answer that.
One question I have is where the old city hall was. That empty lot that's sitting there, that dirt lot. Is there any plans, anything in the works? Is there any way we couldn't add that to parking, eventually pave it down the road?
Yeah.
Because that would probably add just as much as where the old Wells Fargo was.
There's a strip against the building there that is owned by the Alx Building.
That is correct.
The Alx Building.
Right. Yeah, the...
I'm sure they wouldn't mind if we paved it.
Commissioner Steiner is accurate. The land that's behind Mr. Otto's building, there's a, I believe it's about a rounded twenty-foot strip that the City of Dickinson does not own. We own the property then, north of that.
The old city hall, basically.
Yeah, yes, well, we certainly own that land, yeah. So, we could entertain paving that structure. I believe, and I'll refer to Engineer Kubis, I believe the majority of the funds that we have left in that downtown account, and maybe DCA Carlson knows as well, will be used by the paving of the parking lot south of Valard. But if there's any extra, are we planning on any extra dollars in that account?
I actually just got a quote for that parking lot. I believe there will be extra dollars. Just depends how permanent and the amenities we'd like to see in the parking lot of Valard, so...
What's the cost of that lot gonna be?
The cost estimate we had was over a hundred thousand dollars for what I'd consider a more permanent parking lot, concrete pavement, similar to the one north of the library, but had recently got a much cheaper estimate for an asphalt parking lot, but, you know, no amenities, I'll call them, to the parking lot, no lighting, no...
You're talking about the lot on Valard?
On Valard, correct.
East of...
How soon do you think that'll get done?
We're planning to get it done this summer still. There's a little bit of an easement issue with the railroad. Part of that parking lot falls under a railroad lease. The city owns the land, but...
We should also look and taking out that middle strip there somehow, where the parking curb, and then you got that dirt space that collects nothing but junk, and then you got the sidewalk on that same lot.
Oh, you're talking, you're talking in between the two parking lot spaces?
Yeah, well, the one parking lot that is paved now, okay? If you...
On Valard.
By the railroad, yes. You know, they have that strip about four feet wide down there that is, you know, we could take out one set of curbs, make it a deeper parking, you know, to redo that whole thing. Doesn't do any good, it's a mess, it doesn't look good, and...
It is a mess now. There's, probably the only conflict with that would be our corridor overlay district, which Valard falls on that, our property's subject to, just like all the other properties along Valard and all the other corridors. Would require some enhancements to the problem.
There's one other item regarding parking, because I'm glad Commissioner Steiner brought that up. The city commission, long ago, approved a motion, I'm told. We haven't found evidence of it yet, but I'm gonna believe the source until I find it differently. We've, you as a commission has provided them with off-street parking for a certain amount of spaces to support a tenant in the building directly to the west of this parking lot. So, the old Temple Building, I think, or the Lower's Building, excuse me. There's no agreements related to that, but according to the owner of the building, he said that the city commission provided a motion to allow the parking of the National and SCS. So, we'd have to move those spaces as well. And I believe that, in my conversations with the building owner, he was fine with moving the trailer vehicles south to that Valard parking lot or somewhere down in that location. There's, there are a couple of cars that are used by the staff that then can be moved to a different parking lot if you choose to, that is actually north of here, that the city also owns. So, I think we can accommodate alternatives. I'm not sure if you want to perpetuate that type of arrangement. As far as I know, it's the only one where a business owner has specific parking lot requirements or reservations. I don't think we've done that anywhere else. So, my suggestion would be that you make a formal motion at some point, either to relocate those spaces, or just simply to stop that action and cease it from happening forward, so...
We can't find any evidence where we actually took action on that?
We haven't yet. I'm not saying it didn't happen, but we haven't yet. There's no, there's no written agreements, I do know that, but there was a, I was told there was a motion by the commission many years ago.
But typically, when we do something like that, we would have some kind of letter of understanding, I would assume, no?
Typically, today, we would do that, yes. I can't tell you what happened twenty years ago, you know, I...
It's probably been that long.
Oh, I, yes.
Twenty-plus years, probably.
Yes. Yeah, and it should be recorded, the motion should be recorded in city minutes, but it's, the difficulty is trying to define the parameter. Nobody can really define within a certain, you know, was it twenty years ago, or twenty-five years ago, or eighteen years ago, so it's a difficult search process.
Wouldn't it have been when they acquired that tenant?
I would assume so.
Or right around that time? I mean, it had to have been a stipulation of their lease, I would assume.
It is. From what I understand, that there's a lease stipulation that says they have to have so many off-street parking lots.
I would think in the lease, when it originated, there should be a timeframe there.
Within six months either way, I would assume, somewhere in...
Right.
You would think?
Well, I think, I'm not spending too much time, staff, researching this, but I think it should be looked into, but I don't know if I'd be in favor of providing someone with parking space, but...
I wouldn't either. And you can deal with that down the road.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware of the situation.
So, what ultimately you're looking for, Mr. Kessel, is a motion to proceed?
Correct. To put the land for sale with the parameters that I mentioned to you, the covenant.
Okay.
If you want, I can go through them again.
If you would, refresh our memories.
Okay. The covenant would be that the eventual construction would be used for entertainment purposes, that the building that would be constructed would be twenty thousand suite, twenty thousand square feet or larger, that the construction of the building would be completed within twelve months after the land sale took place. We'll be looking into whether or not we can prevent a flip, so to speak. I'm not sure if we can do that. We'd have to escrow the deed until the conclusion of the twelve months of construction. We'd have to vacate a portion of the alley. They will pay for the movement of the utilities that are in the alleyway. That's not our cost, that would be theirs, and that the sale price would be a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kessel in this land sale?
I have one question. So, you're saying that the building needs to be twenty thousand square feet, you're saying that the property is twenty thousand?
No, the property's slightly larger than that. It's about twenty-four to twenty-five.
Okay.
But it's real close to that twenty thousand estimate.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessel? I know what I would be looking for is a motion to approve the land sale with the stipulations.
I'd make that motion with the stipulations that Mr. Kessel laid out, and the price of a hundred thousand.
We have a motion to approve the land sale with stipulations for one hundred thousand.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Right, that's a, that's a great point. As Ms. Crype pointed out, the price should be minimum of a hundred thousand.
I amend my motion, then. A minimum of one hundred thousand.
Minimum of a hundred thousand, okay. We still have a second on that, Mr. Steiner?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead and vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you. That concludes my reports.
All right. And Public Safety's been waiting back there patiently. Fire Chief Seabock, welcome.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. Tonight, I'm giving you a report on the City of Dickinson Safety Program. It's under the Fire Department title, but it's the entire city, all the different departments that we're gonna talk about. You hear me, you've heard me talk about the Safety Committee that we operate with, that has representatives from the various areas of the city. And every, well, it's supposed to be every other month, every quarter for sure, we try to get together with the Safety Committee, and we discuss all kinds of areas of interest and possible problem areas within the city. And those men, there's minutes taken at these meetings, those minutes are always forwarded to the city administrator. But just to show you some of the things that come up at these meetings, there are questions that are asked, like medications in the first aid cabinet, what's, what can the city legally provide and what they can't provide? Safety vests, is there a uniformity amongst the city, or what's the protocol for that? Protective eyewear, what are the rules, regulations concerning protective eyewear amongst our various and different departments? Now, as you see, what we do with the committee, when we talk about these things, we'll assign someone to research this and to get an answer, and we track that, we provide that, as you see on this slide, status resolved, when it was resolved, the people that asked the question are gotten back to with the answers we found. So, I'm showing you this because I want to show you that the Safety Committee that we keep talking about, that group of employees that you allow time, and that the department heads allow time to come together for these meetings, is a working group. We are answering viable, legitimate questions from, from the employee base, and we are getting back to them with the answers. In the second quarter, there were sixteen courses, a choice of sixteen courses that city employees took, that is part of our learning management system, which is a program, safety program choice with workforce safety and insurance. Again, in the second quarter, we met our requirements to keep that program viable for us. I think that the department... I think that the departments are finding this a great resource in many areas for providing necessary training to the employees.
Chief, how many hours, all this training? I mean...
Well, for the learning management system, it's quite extensive.
Is it online?
It's online.
Okay.
It's online.
But online?
And the requirement is that the employees finish one course of their vast course catalog per quarter, so four times a year.
Okay.
So, it's working out very well and a lot of departments and a lot of employees are actually exceeding that. Departments are going into this system and using it to their benefit for other things besides assigned safety program courses. It's working out well. Second quarter, there were six reported incidents. There's a typo up there, sorry, three. There were six reported incidents. Two did require medical attention, two were non-medical issues, and two were property damage issues that still get reported to us. The good thing is, in the first half of the year, we still have not experienced a lost time injury.
The property damage, Chief Seabock, is it our property or are we damaging?
Well, it can be generally, usually, it's a city vehicle involved in some type of accident and that, we get some paperwork on that just to kind of keep track of that.
But if we, if say, a dump truck runs into somebody's other vehicle or a building or something, is that reported under?
That, we would get it just as a property damage claim. That's correct. So, it could be damaged solely to a piece of city equipment or city equipment involved in an accident that where citizens receive some damage also. The good news is that we are significantly lower, our total incidents, that's the bottom line, is the second quarter 2017. Seventeen incidents compared to 65 in 2016. Part of that, of course, is because the environment has slowed down considerably for us in Dickinson. But a part of it, we know, a part of it is that we're operating safer, we're operating smarter, our people, our departments, our supervisors are more aware of the program and what we're trying to do in making sure that our employees go home with all their fingers, all their toes, and they go home healthy. So, a big part of that drop, I know, is that we're just working smarter and we're working safer. And, of course, a part of it is the fact that the pace is not as fast as it was during the boom. Things have slowed down. That concludes the report for the safety program for the city.
Any questions for Chief Seabock?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a constitutional carry presentation by Police Chief Dawson.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Tonight, I wanted to take a few minutes to kind of do a presentation and kind of an educational, on an educational matter. As you all know, the constitutional carry went into effect August 1st. It's a topic we've been receiving a lot of questions for and there's been a lot of questions generated across the state of North Dakota. So, I wanted to take a few minutes and kind of brief the general public and the commission on some of the changes. First of all, as I said, it went into effect August 1st. It was House Bill 1169 that went into legislation. So, who can carry concealed in North Dakota? Anyone who is eligible to possess a Class II concealed firearm license in North Dakota can carry concealed without a permit now. Who is eligible? Anyone who is legally able to possess a firearm or a dangerous weapon. You have to be at least 18 years of age. You have to be a U.S. citizen or legal alien residing in the United States. And you have to be a resident of North Dakota and have had a North Dakota driver's license or North Dakota identification card for at least one year. Who cannot constitutionally carry? Anyone convicted anywhere of a felony offense involving violence or intimidation, convicted of a Class A misdemeanor offense involving violence or intimidation while using or possessing a firearm or dangerous weapon, had been diagnosed, confined, or committed by a court order related to psychiatric issues, unless the original order legally dismissed, or mental health deficiencies, and anyone under the age of 18 cannot constitutionally carry. What is considered concealed? Anything that is not discernible by the ordinary observation of a passerby, it's not secured and is worn under clothing or carried in a bundle that is held or carried by the individual, transported in a vehicle under the individual's control or direction, and available to the individual, such as underneath the seat of a car or in a glove compartment box. What else is not considered concealed? Is carried in a bell toaster, which is wholly or substantially visible or carried in a case designed for carrying a firearm or dangerous weapon, which is wholly or substantially visible, locked in a closed trunk or luggage compartment of a motor vehicle, carried in the field while lawfully engaged in hunting, trapping, or target shooting, whether visible or not. What else is not considered concealed? Carried by any person permitted by law to possess a handgun, unloaded and a secure wrapper from the place of purchase to that person's home or place of business or to place of repair or back to those locations. A bow and arrow rifle, shotgun, unloaded handgun or weapon that will expel or is readily capable of expelling or detectable by the action of a spring compressed air or compressed gas. So, basically, a BB gun, air rifle, or CO2 gun while carried in a motor vehicle. This is a topic that we have received a lot of questions on. If I am constitutionally carried, do I have to notify the law enforcement officer that I'm carrying? Yes. If a person is carrying concealed without a concealed weapons license, they are required to notify law enforcement if they come in contact with you, that they are armed. If carrying with a North Dakota concealed weapons license, there is no duty to inform. Regardless of which authority that person is carrying concealed under, there is a duty to provide the proof upon demand by a law enforcement officer. Either you have to provide your concealed weapons license or an actual or digital photo of a North Dakota driver's license or ID card. Places where you're prohibited to carry? Liquor establishments, bingo gaming sites facilities, public gatherings such as an athletic or a sporting event, a school, a church, and a publicly owned or operated building. The exception with the churches, if you have pre-approved, you're pre-approved by the religious leader to carry inside the church. And a government building is prohibited. Motor vehicles? There was a possible oversight by the legislature when this legislation was enacted. As currently written, you cannot carry concealed in a motor vehicle without a permit. Possible intent of this legislature was to allow concealed carry in a motor vehicle. Changes required to existing law to add constitutional carry exemption to the current motor vehicle clause change should come about during the next legislative session. Some of the concerns summarized. There have been many questions and concerns raised about the new constitutional carry law. One of those concerns has to do with where someone is allowed to carry without a concealed weapons license. It is our understanding that without an exemption to 62.1-0205 of the North Dakota Century Code and 62.1-0210 of the North Dakota Century Code, someone is carrying constitutionally is not exempt from 62.1-03012N and 62.1-04022, which basically deals with motor vehicles. While it's likely that the legislature intended to allow this, without those exemptions, the law does not support it. Whether an officer arrests, charges someone, or a prosecutor charges someone out for this crime is a matter of discretion, however. So, the bottom line is you cannot carry in a motor vehicle a loaded firearm under the constitutional carry law. It's illegal. Exemption would be if you had a concealed weapons license permit. A violation of this would be a Class A misdemeanor, which is one year or $3,000 fine. If you fail to notify law enforcement of carrying armed or concealed, you fail to have possession of your North Dakota driver's license or ID card, you're a North Dakota resident of less than one year, under the age of 18, and carrying or prohibited, you could be charged with a Class A misdemeanor. Frequently asked question, a hunting, vehicle deception. Individual in the field engaged in lawful hunting or trapping of non-game species or fur-bearing animals may carry a loaded firearm in plain view. Hunting a game species, weapon must be unloaded. That means you cannot have one in the chamber. You can't have one in the magazine, but not in the chamber. Unloaded, the chamber, definition of unloaded, the chamber of the firearm does not contain a loaded shell. If the firearm is a revolver, then none of the chambers in the cylinder may contain a loaded shell. Secured, definition secured is a firearm is closed into trunk or non-passenger part of the vehicle, placed into a closed and secured carrying device, rendered and operated by the use of a trigger, hammer, cylinder, slide, or barrel locking device that renders the firearm incapable of firing until the device is unlocked and removed or so disassembled or disassembled as to be rendered incapable of firing. That is the legal definition of secured. Kind of a quick blurt of information on concealed carry. So far, we haven't had any issues with it in the City of Dickinson. Be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding it.
Any questions for Chief Dawson?
Dusty, did the Attorney General make an opinion on that?
That basically is the opinion that I just gave regarding from the Attorney General.
Yeah, I was wondering. I was reading some stuff on that. I know he was reviewing it, but...
Yeah. I think what his ultimate decision was allow discretion, right?
Correct.
To jurisdictions.
Correct.
So...
Which is a problem if you travel from Dickinson to or across the state of North Dakota.
Right. I do have a question for you, unless Commissioners have a question. I was called very first day that it was constitutional carry and a gentleman was walking through a store, holster, holstered gun on his hip. That is not constitutional carry, is it?
It's plain view.
Okay, so, plain view and he was legal?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if you don't have a CWL, you better have it so people can see the entire thing.
Correct. That has not changed.
That's the simplest way to put it.
Yes.
Unless you have a concealed weapon, you better show it.
Well, no, if you have a, you can carry if you're eligible for CW, the permit, the second class permit, you can conceal it.
With the concealed weapons permit, you can't carry it concealed in a motor vehicle?
Correct. With a concealed weapon, without it, you can't.
Yeah, that's just in the vehicle. Yeah. But out in public?
Yes.
You can, you can carry it.
Plain view.
You can plain view or concealed.
Correct.
Right. It just, you know, a business owner called me and there was like, hey, there's a guy standing here with a, thinking he was John Wayne-ish. I'll just put it that way. It was revolver on the hip. So... Mr. Kessel?
Chief Dawson, can you go over again what weapons this applies to? You made reference to bows and arrows and other things. Could you talk about what is eligible to be carried around under constitutional carry? What type of weapon?
Well, obviously firearms such as semi-automatic handguns and revolvers are going to be the most popular carry device. Anything that discharges, such as a taser, could also be considered a concealed weapon because it discharges a cartridge. So, that is also considered a concealed weapon. Such things as a stun gun is not because it does not discharge a device, if that's what you're getting to.
What about like a knife or?
Yeah, it depends on the blade length at that point.
That's a whole nother stipulation.
That's a whole nother...
I think what Mr. Kessel is looking for is how does this affect his squirt gun?
Water in it or not?
Is it loaded if it's got water in it?
But I can't discharge it in the city commission meeting anyway. How about long guns?
Well, it'd be pretty tough to conceal a long gun, but it has been done. It doesn't specify what type of firearm we're talking about. Obviously, to be legal, a shotgun would have to have a certain barrel length, other it's an illegal weapon.
Any other questions for Chief Dawson? Well, thank you for the update. I'm sure you'll receive many questions on this.
Yes, thank you.
We'll move on to engineering. We have a change order with Morris Trucking. Mr. Kupus?
Thank you, President Decker. The first change order we have is with Morris Trucking and Seal Coat for our 2017 Seal Coat project. Earlier this year, we had awarded the 28, or, excuse me, the 2017 Seal Coat project to Morris for approximately $500,000. Since then, we've asked them to provide a cost for some additional work. And that additional work is at the museum parking lot, which we referenced earlier in the museum update, and for the cemetery roads. The city owns and operates the three cemeteries in town. So, generally, the breakdown of the change order, which is $37,259, is $6,803 towards the museum, which they've budgeted for in some of their site and building improvements, and $30,455, which was budgeted out of the street budget, 50% of the 1%. So, these were budgeted amounts. It just wasn't in the original plan for the Seal Coat project that was bid. We, on behalf of the city, our consultant has negotiated these prices. We feel they're fair prices and we would recommend approval of the change order.
Any questions for Mr. Kupus? And that, this would be all three cemeteries? New roads completely?
It would Seal Coat all the roads. The map, obviously, at this scale is a little tough to see, but all the roads that are paved now, there are a few roads that you might not see as a road in some of the cemeteries, but all the paved roads in the cemeteries, it would get sealed.
Any questions, comments for Mr. Kupus?
That also includes the mausoleum parking lot, so...
No questions or comments for Mr. Kupus? I would look for a motion.
Someone?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any other questions, comments? Hearing on will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chairwoman's aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The second is, the second item is also a change order number one for the 14th Street project that we have with light construction. And this change order number one will incorporate additional work into the project, including importing suitable backfill material, replacing non-working water valves, replacing and revising existing manholes. The original contract was for $676,000 and a detailed summary of the working costs were to be provided in your packet. There was two pages up that were missing, if you really get into the details of it. But essentially, what we had our consultant do on this project was we ran into something in the field. We had organic soils that we couldn't rebuild the road on. We removed those and essentially paid for them on a time and materials basis. So, we got the quotes, all the prices that they had for their materials, monitored their time in the field. And this change order, I've got to find that number, the total of $94,961.91 is a compilation of all these work items that we've monitored in the field, negotiated prices again with the contractor. And to answer any more detailed questions than that, I do have a couple reps from Apex Engineering here who are our consultants in the field on the project. I would also add that with this change order, it increased the contract time by four working days. Obviously, it replaced these items and removed this item, removed the importers, added some time to the contract.
I have a general question. The original substantial completion date was July 17.
Correct.
And the new substantial completion date with the added days is targeted for August?
August 16, I believe.
With the four days? Or will it be August 16?
Well, their target completion date of real world, we're done, is August 16. The four days would add on to the contract time.
Sure.
So, essentially, it'd be four less days of liquidated damages that would be able to be charged to the contractor for not completing the project on time.
And so, are liquidated damages, or how much per day? Ballpark?
You know, you asked me this earlier and I didn't have a chance to look it up. Maybe John or Scott would know it, Tom?
You just want to come up to the mic?
I'm John Wolc from Apex Engineering. I'm the project manager. For, and I've got to check it, but I believe we had $1,100 on there per day until they were substantially complete. And then after that, it drops down to 500.
So, for clarification, it's often a point of contention as to what exactly substantially complete means. We all know what final complete means. It's done, done. But substantially complete, for a project like this, we would, of course, have the water and sewer operational, functional, fully functional, and it would be open to safe and convenient traffic. So, the pavement would be in, yeah, not what it is today, but it would be open to traffic that... that, you know, if there were signs and striping, that would be in place. There might be some seeding to do, some cleanup to do.
Sure.
But it's, it's operational. Are there any other questions that myself or John might be able to answer?
I, I know we've all received calls.
Sure.
I know Mr. Kupus...
He calls himself one.
Mr. Kupus has, I think, done a great job in answering a lot of people's questions on this, so I thank you for keeping them up to date, especially the business owners around there. There was a lot of concern, so...
So although there will be an increase, there will be some offset through some of the penalties for not being...
Yeah, it, it won't offset the, the full amount of this, of this change order, of course, but a lot of it is, we'll have new valves we found, one if we got into the field, well, this valve doesn't work while we're there, we're going to replace that valve. And so...
Sure.
We, we have assets that we're, we're gaining, it's not just money out the door.
Right.
What, what was the total budgeted amount for this project?
You know, initially, it was, it was around $1 million. It, it had vacillated a lot, because initially, this project was planned to be a stormwater pond with storm sewer north of this 14th.
So that was part of that project up to that part?
Yeah. Our budget, you know, it's, it's a work in progress, like a lot of our budgets, but it probably started out $2.5 million. And then sometime last year, we said, you know, all these utilities are, they still need to be replaced. The pond project, the stormwater project to the north of this, of the hotels there, we knew that was, was on hold for some amount of time, so we, we left that project on the shelf, moved forward with the utility project. But it was about $1 million was our, our budgeted amount. Obviously, the bid came in less, that doesn't include engineering the $676,000, that's just the construction costs. So, and, and in your packet, you see, we, we broke this down, understanding it's a lot of different things going on. It's, it's street improvements, it's water, sewer, storm, and it services some development, some of these storm improvements service the development and future development to the north. So there, there's a table in your, in your packet that breaks down how we intend to pay for this, and we would continue that percentage breakdown to reflect the cost of this additional work in change order one.
Any other questions for Mr. Kupus? Any questions for the engineers? You guys don't have a whole lot of fans tonight, everybody got up. All right, I would look for either a motion to approve or deny this change.
So move.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further comment or questions? Hearing on will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Change order is approved. We have nothing from Public Works, planning, building, anything from Commission? Any Commissioners want to bring up any item? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up with a public issue, a city concern, not on our agenda? Please come forward, state your name, and let us know about your concern. Seeing there are no concerns, not on the agenda, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.